All right, good evening. Now I'd like to bring the regular evening meeting of the Township of Langley Council to order, and the first item is the adoption and received agenda items, and I would ask for a couple of changes. D two, Mr. Bert Hick has withdrawn his delegation, and we have another delegation that's been added, and that's Hanai Sakura will be D two. So with those changes, I'll ask for a motion. Counsel Arneson, second by Counsel Fox. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Next item is adoption of the minutes, the regular evening council meeting of March the fifth. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Fox, second. Counsel Davis, any errors or omissions? All those in favor, opposed and carried. Now move on to presentations, and we have a presentation by TransLink regarding the new Fraser Highway B line. Welcome here.
Thank you very much, Mayor Fros, councillors. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Sarah Ross. I'm the Director of System Planning at TransLink. Let's see if I can... Thank you. So TransLink is working with the Township of Langley on a number of initiatives to improve mobility for residents in the region and residents in the township, and that includes increases to bus service, serving this part of the region over the last year, and on other initiatives. What I'm here today to talk about is a new service that will be coming to the Township of Langley, starting in September, excuse me, in fall 2019, and that is what we call a B line. It's a higher-order bus service. We'll be implementing a B line along the Fraser, along the Fraser Highway, so that's what I'm here to talk to you about today. TransLink is guided by the Mayor's Council's ten-year vision, which calls for a network of 12 B lines across the region. Five of those B lines are funded under what we call our Phase One Plan, which was improved in late 2016, and that includes the Fraser Highway B line. So the buses are ordered, and when they arrive, it takes a while to order a bus, we will be implementing that service. Fraser Highway is an important corridor. It connects a series of centers, and putting out a higher, a high-quality bus service will really help build transit ridership as we continue planning for rapid transit on this corridor. The new service will reach 58,000 residents, 40,000 jobs, and that is, we know the growth in this part of the region is very significant. So what is a B line? What makes it a higher-order bus service? Well, it's fast and reliable. It doesn't stop as much is a big part of that. And also, we're work, we'll be working really hard to design the streets that the bus travels on, to give it some transit, what we call transit priority. We'll be providing high-capacity buses. This service is going to run every eight minutes in peak times, and every 10 to 15 minutes at other times. And by other times, what I mean is from 5:00 a.m. to midnight every day of the week. We're going to be looking for ways to make this easy to find, to give the buses and stops a different look, working hard to get real-time information out on the bus stops, so it makes it very easy for people to use. Speaking of easy to use, it should be 20% faster to get from Langley Centre to Surrey Central. The increased frequency is going to mean people have to wait a lot less, and it's an 80% increase in capacity coming out to, coming out to Langley. So this really enables people to start thinking and having it in their consciousness that there's a high-quality transit service. They don't necessarily even need to look at a schedule. They just know that they go out, and on average, they probably only have to wait about four minutes. So that's what kind of high-frequency service can, can do. So that, though, it's going to have 14 stops, which is, are shown along the bottom there. So as you well, well know, there is congestion on Fraser Highway, and this is an example of some of the analytics that we've been doing, at looking at where the buses that we have today get stuck in traffic. And you can see the, the two sort of most significant choke points are right around 200s and into the city of Langley, as well as on the Surrey, the western end, as you come into Surrey Central. So those will be some places where we'll be looking to try to find ways to, mechanisms so that the bus doesn't get stuck in traffic and can really provide faster and more reliable travel times for our customers. So we have a variety of tools in our toolkit that we, we can use. We have, we're not at the point yet where we know which of those tools we would apply to which locations, but this gives you an example of some of the kinds of things that, that we may be looking to, to do. So we will be beginning public consultation on April 3rd. This month, we're out talking to all the councils, and then we'll broaden our consultation to, to the public for, through April and May, showing them what the, the service will be, and, and some of the changes that we are proposing to, to go along with, changes to some of the other routes. So for this, this corridor, the current services along the Fraser Highway is the 502. It runs very frequently today. We'll be reducing how frequently that runs, because a bunch of the ridership, the people that take it today, will shift to the B line. And then the Route 503, which runs out to Alder Grove, will be continuing to run from Alder Grove to Surrey Central. This is our proposal, and it will serve all local stops. And so people who currently take the 503, 80% of them will be unaffected by this change, and the others will have the opportunity to shift, to either stay on the 503, or take the transfer to the B line, which goes so frequently and will be, be quite fast. So we'll be doing quite a lot of work to create awareness, putting ads in your local newspapers, using all of TransLink's social media feeds, and doing ads on buses and Skytrain, contacting the community groups that, that we have relationships with, to, to drive and encourage people to either come out to one of our in-person events, which are, some of them are, we're still finalizing where the one will be in Langley. We're looking, we look for opportunities to go to where people are, and so that's what we're, we're just trying to figure out what makes the most sense. And then, of course, online will be, will be a primary way for people to participate. So we're here, we've been working with your staff for most, a good part of this year in developing this, and will be, anticipate coming back to council at your discretion in late June or early July to report back on what we heard from consultation. Then we'll continue doing more of the technical and design work, and if further engagement on any of the options is required, we'd anticipate doing that in early 2019. I'm happy to receive any further questions, or you can be in touch with Paul Cordero, your Manager of Transportation Engineering, who has been our key point of contact on your team. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ross, for that presentation. There are some questions. I know last Friday, there was a big announcement on the funding in Phase Two, and this, I understand, is funded by Phase One, and there's three phases in the Mayor's ten-year vision. And one thing that's exciting to me, at least, is that Phase Two has some improvements to bus service, existing bus service that we have in Willoughby and in Brookswood. Can you elaborate a little bit about, on that, and how that ties into this B line?
Absolutely. Thank you. I, one of the things that we have committed to do in, in 2018 is to, to do a review of the Langley Bus Network, particularly the Langley Shuttle Network, including addressing the new service to, to service area in Brookswood. And the Phase Two Plan, where the funding agreement was announced on Friday, is, and the, the draft of that plan includes about a 10% increase in shuttle service in Langley. The exact allocation of that to be determined through our review and work with the community, as well as we anticipate seeing increased frequency to, to the 501 service, which particularly connecting up 200s to Carvolf. Of course, the, the 555, which is the express service from, from Carvolf Exchange on Highway One to connect to the Skytrain, has had quite significant increases, just because it's crazy popular. So we're trying really hard, I think we're running every six minutes on that one right now. So yes, there's a number of changes that this new plan will enable us to implement.
Great, thank you. Okay, Counsel Fox.
Yeah, thank you for coming and sharing this with us. Any transportation upgrades is good news. Slow, but good news. One thing that, you mentioned the 503. My first question is, are we going to see an increase in either Phase One, Two, or Three, in the frequency of 503 through to Alder Grove?
The, the frequency of the 503 is currently proposed to remain the same, at this point, under this Phase One, under the Phase One Plan.
Okay, fair enough. But you, you being involved in the planning piece, I mean, I'd, I'd request that you take a look at that, especially with the new recreation center. We want to make sure that enough people can access the recreation center at, at opportune times. The second thing, and it's something I've mentioned over the years, going back a number of years, is, in the planning process, is access to Gloucester. And I think, I feel personally, that there's a natural synergy with the 555 bus loop at Carvolf with Gloucester, and if you ran the bus from here clockwise in the morning, and took people from the 555 to Gloucester, and came around, and, you know, your 503 kind of did a circle like that, back into Langley Centre, and then in the afternoon, you did the inverse, so people could actually work, live further over in there, and actually work in Gloucester. Because right now, Gloucester's a bit of an oasis, and not in a positive way, with access for, for transportation. And having been the principal of the high school out there, I know that young people look for jobs, and they can't get to Gloucester. And there's a lot of jobs that are entry-level jobs, warehousing, and that sort of thing for students, that would be very beneficial. So I know, you probably can't answer this, but I think in the planning context, we have to look at how we can access Gloucester in a more efficient and functional fashion in the future.
I think that's something that we can look at as we go through that local area review this year on, on what makes sense, as Langley has changed and continues to grow, and I totally agree, we want to have jobs in places that, that people can get to taking transit.
Yeah, even if, even if it's 503, and you got onto a shuttle that went back and forth to Gloucester, and we've talked about the Vancouver Zoo, a lot of youth kids get employed there, too, have a bus stop out front there, pick up, whatever. So I'm hoping in the planning context that you'll take some time and look at those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. Thanks for coming today. When, when we talk about the, the Fraser Highway B line, how many, how many buses is that, that are coming? You probably said, I just maybe missed it.
So the B line will run every eight minutes in the peak, so from about 6:00 a.m. to about 9:00 a.m., it'll run every eight minutes, so that's...
Do you know how many buses that, I don't know how long a distance of line that is, and how many buses that is that, so you ordered the buses, how many buses are ordered to come in for that B line? Do you know that?
Um, not off the, I don't know, I know, not off the top of my head, I don't know, but I can certainly get that answer for you.
That's fine. And, and I, these buses are, look quite a bit larger and longer than a regular bus. Do you know sort of how much extra capacity they have?
Yep. So we have kind of almost three sizes of buses. We have what we call the shuttles, those are the smaller ones. Then we have the standard ones, those are 40 feet long. Then we have the, the, what you might call an articulated bus, they're also referred to as a 60-foot bus, and the capacity of that is about 100 people.
Wow, okay. Good, that's good for me, thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, how did the double-decker bus pilot project work out?
Uh, it's still, actually, it's just wrapped up, I guess. People have really loved them, and, and we've heard that from other, from other agencies as, as well, so.
Pretty good. Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
For your presentation. Okay, so now we move on to delegations, and the first delegation is Michelle Connerdy. Please come forward, and just write your name for the staff, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Michelle Connerdy, and I live in the Brookswood area.
Just wait for you to get started.
Oh, there's not supposed to be any music. Can I do anything about that?
That's nice music.
It's not that. I didn't want it to be overwhelming. Mayor, council, and staff, thank you very much for allowing me this time to speak to you tonight. My family moved to Brookswood in 2011, became aware of and involved in local politics in 2014, when the Leave-Brookswood-Alone Campaign headed by Anna R. and David Chambers came to my attention. At that time, I did not pay very much attention to the details around the interim tree clearcutting bylaw, number 5071, for Brookswood-Furnridge, when it passed in 2014. However, when I heard about it, I believed it was the right thing to do. Trees are not political. They are a viable, necessary part of our environment. To politicize this issue hurts everyone. Many of you know I posted on Facebook last week about trees coming down on a lot at 40th Avenue and 204th in Brookswood. The owner of this lot has applied to build a new house, and on that lot, there were 10 large trees that were cut down. I would call them significant. I missed them the first day I drove past the property, eight of which were on the perimeter of the property, and two of them were in the center of the property. I called the Township of Langley Municipal Hall and asked to speak to the Tree Bylaw Department to discuss whether or not this lot was covered by the Brookswood-Furnridge Tree Protection Bylaw 2017, number 5301, passed in November of 2017. Tree Bylaw told me that the bylaw only covered the undeveloped areas of Brookswood-Furnridge, and that this lot was in the developed area. I thanked them for their time, and then I received a call back from Township Engineering Director Ramon Safi, who confirmed the lot was not included in the bylaw, that the bylaw only covered the undeveloped areas in Brookswood-Furnridge neighborhood, and then I thanked Mr. Safi for his time as well. And at this point, I assume that bylaw number 5071 covered the same areas as the permanent bylaw passed in 2017, November. I then had a third call from a bylaw officer that informed me of the same thing. This lot is not covered by the new bylaw, however, prior to the new bylaw being passed in November, it would have been included. I heard what they said, but I didn't fully comprehend what they had told me, and something just didn't sit right. I thought about it for a couple days, and then called back for clarification. Sure enough, the temporary tree cut by cutting bylaw, number 5071, covered the entire Brookswood-Furnridge area, developed and undeveloped. And the final bylaw, bylaw only covers the undeveloped areas. Developers and residents can apply for a permit to clearcut a developed Brookswood property. An arborist report is not required, a landscape plan is not required, and it's all completely legal. So the property owner on, on 40th and 204A, what they did was completely legal. As a citizen and a taxpayer in the Township of Langley, I am thoroughly confused as to why an interim bylaw would have more coverage and more teeth than a final bylaw. To not openly acknowledge or display this discrepancy so shows complicity and is inherently devious. It begs the question, why split Brookswood-Furnridge into two distinct areas, developed and undeveloped, if not for this type of action? I hereby request that this mayor and council put an immediate emergency interim tree cut, clearcutting bylaw in place, covering the entire township of Langley, until such time as a comprehensive township-wide tree bylaw can be formed and implemented to protect our tree canopies and the wildlife that exist in those canopies, as we are now approaching nesting season. The Langley Times put up a web poll after Hanai Sakurai, I hope I didn't say that wrong, Hanai, delegation presentation two weeks ago, requesting a comprehensive tree bylaw in the Township of Langley. And although the results are by no means statistically correct due to methods used to collect the information, they are very telling. 79% of the respondents answered yes to the following question. Would you support the creation of a township-wide tree protection bylaw? Again, an overwhelming 79% of the respondents said yes. Counselor Fox wants to put off any action on this issue until 2019, and in fact, achieved that this afternoon, which is really disappointing. You have seven months left in your mandate, and council's chosen not to address this issue. They've chosen to shelf it for a full year. This is simply not good enough, or soon enough. Just for reference, the following municipalities do have tree protection in place: the Village of Amboy, the Village of Lions Bay, Village of Belkara, the cities of Burnaby, Coquitlam, Delta, Maple Ridge, New Westminster, Porcoquitlam, Port Moody, Richmond, Surrey, Vancouver, White Rock, Abbotsford, and the District of North Vancouver. The following do not have a tree protection bylaw, but may have protection measures in place: the District of West Vancouver, which they're addressing next month, Bowen Island, Electoral A, Area A, Swas and First Nations, City of Langley, City of North Vancouver, City of Pitt Meadows, and the Township of Langley. Clearly, the work has been done by other municipalities. We are not reinventing the wheel here. Let's get to work and implement a tree protection bylaw that the majority of our community and our, and our council can work with. This cannot wait, the damage cannot be undone, and I, as a taxpaying citizen of Langley, Township of Langley, demand that this mayor and council do something immediately, on an emergency basis, to prevent thousands of trees that cannot, and will probably will not be replaced, from coming down in the next few months. And just to be clear, by no means do I mean to hold captive landowners. I understand that significant trees may need to come down to build new homes, and trees do get in the way. In these cases where significant trees are required to come down, this should have an outside of nesting season, and I'd like to see a proper replacement trees planted when construction is complete. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you. Question from council. Counsel Fox.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. I think you misinterpreted my motion completely, but I'll, that's not the intent here. Township-wide, what's your definition of township-wide?
All of the Township of Langley, with the exception of the Brookswood undeveloped area, which is already protected by a bylaw that you passed in November.
So you understand the percentage that's in the ALR?
I do, 75%. So the other 25% needs to be protected.
Okay, so you're talking, when you say township-wide, you're talking of the lands within the urban containment boundary?
I'm not a lawyer, I don't know how to interpret that, so I can't answer.
Well, I, I'm trying to determine, I live in the ALR. Are you expecting that I would have to abide by a township tree bylaw?
Uh, I would believe so, if it's an emergency interim tree bylaw, absolutely, until your mayor and council can get together and put a proper bylaw in place that protects. Obviously, if you're farming, you know, the tar lands are a perfect example. All those trees came down on the pretense that it was to be farmed, and we all know that it's not going to be farmed. So clearly, those lands do need to be protected.
Okay, so my question then becomes, do you understand that we are a regulated community? So an interim tree bylaw may have some, but a tree bylaw per se would actually have to go through the Minister of Agriculture in any ALR lands, which is 75%. You understand that? And the, and the Minister of Agriculture has never supported any of our bylaws that have come through?
Well, they might support a bylaw if you get one that's good enough, that they feel that they can support.
And my other question is, do you realize that we had a tree bylaw proposal, I think it was in 2011, and it failed because of the public, at the public hearing?
I do.
No, okay. So I just want you, I just want to make sure...
And that, and that was seven years ago, and I think things have changed.
Well, I'm not saying they have or haven't, I'm just saying it has been tried before. It's not that this council, or some of us on this council, haven't tried before, because we have. And it, it didn't pass for, because of public input.
And so you were supportive of it in 2011?
It never got past that.
No, but were you supportive of it?
I can't remember.
It's telling.
Hey, could I have, excuse me, excuse me, sir? No, excuse me, Counsel Fox. In the back row, we won't tolerate that in this chambers, please. Have some decorum. Thank you. Thank you? No, thank you. I've, I've never heard that sort of thing in this chambers, and I'd ask this chambers to have some respect, and, you know, thank you. Sorry, sorry, Ms. Connerdy. Please carry on.
So I'm just saying, it was defeated back then because of the public backlash associated. And I'm just, it's just a point, I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just saying you're aware of that.
I'm aware of it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Richter.
Yeah, you mentioned the, that you've been doing some research into the interim tree bylaw, and also the new Brookswood-Furnridge undeveloped area bylaw. In your opinion, which bylaw is better?
Well, obviously, the one that has the, well, you know what, I, I'm not an expert, but I, when I hear from the bylaw officer, that the, that the one that was in place until November 2017 had more teeth, had, gave her more tools to do her job, unsolicited, I would have to say that that one, I am not an expert by any stretch of the imagination, but if I had to choose right now, if you asked me to choose, I'd choose the one that we had in place previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you for coming tonight. I, I do appreciate the fact that Counselor Fox has raised some issues that historically have been challenging, because I've been around, not on council, but as part of the community and part of those discussions, and I know there are a lot of people probably in the audience tonight that have been around for those discussions for even longer than I have. So I, I do think times change, obviously, and communities evolve, demographics change. It is important to note, because that's a distinction that we have to make, that currently, because of the right to farm, 75% of our lands would not, at this time, be something that would be covered, although I don't really know what the disposition would be if we had an, an emergency and interim tree cutting bylaw put in place. However, just to say, sort of preemptively to myself, I will be bringing that forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions, thank you. Okay. And the next delegation is Ms. Hanai Sakurai. And I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
So thank you, Your Worship, and members of council. My name is Hanai Sakurai, and my request for the delegation tonight was actually on the, to comment about the motion set forth by Counselor Fox in the afternoon meeting regarding the tree bylaw task force to be deferred to 2019 to the new council. But I understand that's already been passed, and I wasn't able to attend the meeting in the afternoon, so. But I just wanted to state that we are very disappointed with the deferral to 2019, as we did have a large number of support from the community groups and environmental groups. But we will, we are looking forward to working with the new council member on the comprehensive tree bylaw. And I just wanted to say that I fully support my previous delegation request to adopt a interim bylaw immediately for the whole entire township of, of Langley.
Thank you. I have a question from council. Thank you. Counsel Richter.
Hi. When you spoke to us last week, you talked about wanting a standing committee, and so we've referred that to staff to look at, and they still haven't sent us a report. But would you, a standing committee might be problematic, because a standing committee requires one member of council for each member of the community that's on the, on the committee. A select committee would not. So would you be acceptable to having a select committee as opposed to a standing committee?
Yes, so someone pointed that out to me, so that was, I apologize, that was a lack of my research on that part. So from my understanding, standing committee requires at least half of council members, defined in the community charter, so what we were seeking is more of a select committee.
A select committee.
With a task force, because it's more of a shortened timeframe to come up with a resolution.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you. I get confused all the time, too. I have to look it up every time in the, in the community charter, so not a problem, but it, you know, certainly, that idea has some legs with council, and, and, you know, it is important that we do this right. And I know you work in the field in Richmond, and it takes time to make bylaws and get bylaws right with all the public, especially something like this. It takes a lot of public engagement, because it's, there's, we have to hear all sides, but looking forward to it, to the council, looking at this next term. Counsel Fox.
Yeah, thank you. It's unfortunate you didn't understand the context of my, anywhere here for that discussion. We asked, we, did you listen to the discussion this afternoon?
No, I was at work, so I wasn't able to...
Okay. Because that report, actually, I asked Counselor, or sorry, Mr. Safi, it would probably take anywhere up to eight weeks to get that report back, and that was on the process piece? So part of the reason of the, the challenge, and you've obviously alluded to it tonight, is you would prefer an interim, a temporary bylaw, and that goes back, and that's your preference at this point in time? And so, okay. And I think Counsel Arneson's alluded to that.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions. Thanks for your presentation. Okay, so takes care of delegations, move on to bylaws for first and second reading. F1 is resounding application number 100481, development permit number 100898, and bylaw 5306. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Fox, second by Counsel Davis. Discussion on F1. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, I just had a question about the old air care facility that we had in Langley, if that might be... if that might be a site that would be a possibility for them to look at.
Is that in the city or in...
Yeah, that was in the city.
On the city, okay.
But it did testing, like this facility's going to do. It almost seems a shame to make them build a brand-new building when there's a building there that was already used for testing, vehicle testing.
Well, that'd be up to the proponent, whether they looked at other properties, but Mr. Back... I think this facility requires semi-trailers for weighing, whereas an air care doesn't have that kind of facility. It's...
That's correct, Your Worship. This has to be able to involve trucks of a significant size, and that former facility was quite limited in terms of its testing for emissions.
Yeah, this one has several parking bays for semi-truck and trailers, and it's a weigh station, also a motorcycle testing ground, which takes a lot more space than the air care facility would. But, good question. Counselor Fox.
Well, my question is, isn't this testing driver capacity, not engine functionality?
Right.
So they need room, and they used to do this actually on Logan and 203rd?
Yeah, it's the motorcycle drivers' testing.
Okay, so it's a...
Also a weigh station for commercial vehicles.
Right, so it's a different context than...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. Just reading the staff report, which is very thorough, it's interesting to me that this is a first-of-its-kind opportunity, and it seems like, potentially, it would be good in this community. I'm always very cautious, though, about the fact that there is a reference to the fact of what they'd have to do for sound mitigation, because apparently, there is a residential neighborhood to the south. And I know it talks about the berm that they're going to have there, but it does require also a variance, because according to, I guess, the original zoning that was on this property, it meant that all of their activities had to take place indoors, which is quite different than having, obviously, large vehicles and motorcycles on your site, because that's the purpose of their use. So I do support it going forward, just looking forward to hearing, you know, what the feedback would be on those specific concerns.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on F1. Carries unanimously. Move on to F2, and so official community plan amendment and rezoning application 100159, brewery lounge endorsement application number 000034, bylaw 5356, and bylaw 5357. Kind of a motion... Boy, everybody's moving this one, maybe just because of brewery. Counselor Long, Counselor Qualley, seconds. Any discussion? I enjoyed one of their green beers yesterday. Counselor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. Everybody's keen to have some more artisanal beer, if that's obviously the case. I'm just wondering, through you, Worship, to staff, just a little clarification regarding the change in the CD zoning. So the change there, does that just mean that it's site-specific to that change to allow a brewery? That won't have any implications for the zoning anywhere else in the township?
That's correct. Mr. Seffi's not, he's had it site-specific to the...
Okay. All right, thank you. So I very much support the application.
Counselor Sperrle.
Thank you. I just had a question through you to staff. We received on table, on council, read it, a letter from Dead Frog Brewery, sort of going over some of their concerns. And I just wondered, in regards to a couple items, the... Sorry, let me get the exact wording here, where they were talking about the expanded kitchen capacity to allow for a bit more of a variety of food options. Just wondering if that's something that, at this stage, would be discussed, or would that be after the public hearing, or... And... Yeah, go ahead.
So, Mr. Seffi, I believe it's the... We have both the public hearing, but there's also the input, public input opportunities. Is that right, Mr. Seffi?
Yeah.
That's correct, Your Worship.
So it's what happened at the same time, simultaneously?
Yeah, okay, so we could address that. Is that something that council can address at that stage, then?
Counsel can address that after the public hearing, at time of third reading, certainly.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Any further discussion on F2? Seeing none, I'll call the question. It's carried unanimously. And I will move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading. And G1 is highway closure, dedication, removal, and disposal, bylaw number 5355. Could I have a motion, please? Counselors Arneson, second by Counsel Whitmarsh. And discussion on G1. Seeing none, I'll call the question. And carries unanimously. Heavy bylaws for consideration at third reading. This is H1, official community plan amendment and rezoning application 100142, development permit application number 100841. This is Levitt Holdings, and bylaw 5287, 5288. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Fox, and a second, or a second on third reading?
A second.
Counselor Qualley. And discussion, Counsel Richter.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, as I recall, we had sent it back to staff to discuss possible changes with the proponent, and what has changed as a result of that? Or is it back in front of us exactly as it was when we gave it public hearing?
So, I'll ask Mr. Seffi to elaborate further, but in the report, it talked about they did a lot of sound studies, recommendation from their consultant, their specialist, was a sound mitigation wall, and they've gone in some depth in doing... Having an independent consultant look at sound issues that were raised at the public hearing. Mr. Seffi, I know I picked that out, there may be other things in it that I missed.
That's essentially it, Your Worship. They have proposed mitigation measures to address the issues that were raised at the public hearing, particularly relating to noise, in the form of, I guess, in two ways. One is the installation of a two-meter-high wall along the north and west property lines, as well as some operational amendments that are being incorporated in the conditions of rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Long.
Worship, the referral was very clear. It says to staff to discuss with the proponent restricting the uses to the office and indoor training. Now, it's difficult for me, because I'm very much pro-business, but this is an anomaly. There used to be spools lumber there, and now it's morphed into this business, which is a great business. But we were very clear from the public hearing that it just was not a compatible use with the neighborhood. So I understand what staff have just said, coming back with a slight variance, but to me, I think the original motion has to stand. We said indoor use and office use only, so I can't support that.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. I'd like to echo those comments. In my notes, I put down that we originally asked for a specific thing, and so I think that when it comes back, that the referral back to staff, in my opinion, there... This doesn't really address what we asked them for. And so, when I look at the graph that's here, the schematic of the property, I think that the intention, in addition to the noise factor, but of course, you know, that was an issue, and I understand why they'd have a consultant come back with some kind of noise mitigation plan, because it says right in the report that they think that their integrity of their business plan is really predicated on having all of these uses on the property. But my problem is that it's not a good interface with the properties to the north. These are beautiful residential homes, and so I think what clearly was brought forward, from my recollection of the public hearing, is that people wanted to have the quiet enjoyment, in particular, of their property. And so I'm not particularly moved by this latest iteration, because I think if it was the intention of the proponent to try and address the situation, they could have gone further and reconfigured that area. I understand they want to have their nice building right on front of Fraser Highway, but to have the quieter use backing up onto the back of the property would be much more appropriate. And, you know, if it's their intention to have all of these uses on the property, then I certainly think that we should hold their feet to the fire to have a different configuration, rather than just saying, since they're putting up an acoustic wall... And by the way, I did a lot of research on acoustic walls, and I think what they are proposing as an option is certainly not the highest grade of acoustic protection that could be created. And the other problem is that, from an engineering point of view, very often, depending on who is backing onto your property, who needs to be protected from the noise, in fact, the barrier, if it's not actually absorbing noise, is just going to deflect noise and push it up. And most people's bedrooms are upstairs. So I'm concerned about the fact that even if they do these other mitigation measures, which they're proposing, it's not really going to resolve the problem.
Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I think the, you know, I think the proposal that's come back here, that staff's brought us after other discussions with the proponent, are not adequate for what we would like to see. I think a two-meter-high fence changed into a two-meter-high noise barrier wall is a step, but it's not near... Far enough as to where it needs to go. I think it's just clear, based on the fact that they've said that this is their business, and this is what their business has to be, I think it's pretty clear that their business doesn't fit there. If that's their... They've made it clear themselves that it doesn't really fit in that neighborhood. So I don't think it's enough, and I wouldn't support this going to third.
Thank you. Counsel Fox.
I think originally, I asked for some clarity about hours of operation and days of operation, too. Is this just... Did we get that in any way, shape, or form? I'm wondering, is this just nine to five? Because I know one of the people that came, or a couple, said, you know, the beepers are going at six in the morning. Because this is a training facility, are they just working, quote-unquote, "business hours"? Or are they on Saturdays? Or are they working till nine at night? Or do we know any of that? Or is that hypothetical at this point?
Mr. Seffi, was there hours of operation in that report?
Your Worship, perhaps I can respond in the following way. There are no restrictions in terms of the hours of operation, other than the requirements of the noise bylaw being applicable at any time. They are different during the day than they are at night, but there are no restrictions in terms of the hours of operation.
Would it be inherently valuable to put a covenant on restrictions, or is that probably going beyond our mandate? Mr. Seffi?
That would be discretion of council, Your Worship. It could be incorporated in the... I guess it's best in the license, the business license for the operation, as opposed to the zoning bylaw, but it could be done as a covenant on title.
Okay, and the second question I've got, or related to that, is the noise mitigation wall, are the trees in front of it or behind it, on the north and west perimeter? Are those trees a buffer on the business side or on the resident side?
Your Worship, the wall will go along the property line with the landscaping buffer prior to the wall, so it will be on the subject site.
Okay, so the trees would be on the subject site side, not the resident side of the wall?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Qualley.
Thanks, I agree with the comments Counsel Whitmarsh made. I think the direction from council in the referral to discuss the restriction of the use to the office and indoor training center was really clear. And I think the feedback from the public hearing wasn't just about the noise, it was also about the lights. And, you know, we can't really restrict their use of the space once they're approved, and so having to control their business from maybe not operating on a Saturday or Sunday is really difficult to do. So, yeah, it's unfortunate that the proponent... This was their only solution, was this two-meter sound mitigation. There was a lot of other concerns brought forward at the public hearing, so I won't be able to support the application.
Your Worship, just very briefly, in terms of the lighting, there is a requirement for lighting impact analysis and a lighting plan to be provided by electrical engineer based on council policy.
Right, but I thought that there would have perhaps been an effort by the proponent to address the concerns following the public hearing, not waiting until the next steps to do that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? It looks like I might be taking an alternative view from most of council here, in that there is a portion of this property, or one lot, that already has that use, and certainly that use has been there for many years. I used to shop there for lumber a long time ago, and that was a pretty noisy use. So we're really... That Levitt leaves, it could be somebody else going in there that would have 24-hour use in that same property, not the one that's to the north, because that wouldn't be part of it. But it was designated an official community plan. I think the proponent has taken some measures and heard council, and that our concern was the noise, and the neighbors' concern was the noise, and they've done some work to mitigate that noise. But obviously, this is... Whatever council wills is fine, but I think the use that's there now, and that could be there if they're not there, certainly if it could be there, it could be more impactful to the community. So this is more of a daytime training and rental. So with that, I'm going to call the question on H1. And everybody's opposed but me. Counsel Richter, Counsel Fox, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Qualley, Counsel Sperrle, Counsel Davis, Counsel Long, the motion fails. We move on to I1, bylaws for final adoption. I1 is drinking water conservation bylaw, bylaw number 5321.
Second.
Counsel Fox, second by Counsel Qualley. Any discussion on I1? Just change your automatic sprinkler systems. I1. I call the vote. Yeah, there's no discussion. I call the vote. Yep, yep. Just remember, twice a week, no, not three. Carries unanimously. And so now, we want I1, we want two. The mayor and council report. So, just got my notes here. Welcome here, everyone, and it's nice to see a full house. On Friday, March 9th, was the annual Bowl for Kids' Sake event kickoff at Willbrook Lanes. It was great to see so many people attend this annual event, including Counsel Qualley, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Fox, and MLAs Mary Pollack and Rich Coleman. Over $20,000 was raised to help fund mentoring programs. And last year, I was gloating how we beat the city. This year, I'm a little bit quieter about that. So we're going to have training camp starting earlier. We've got to start early. Later that evening, was a West Fine Arts Show reception at Yorkson Middle School. Counsel Fox and I enjoyed viewing the work of artists from across Western Canada. And partial proceeds from the sale of the art will go to help homeless youth in our community. On Saturday, March 10th, was the annual open house of Diamond Bar Equipment in Aldergrove. They have some great products, including robotic lawnmowers, and like to thank Bruce for the invitation and talking me into buying one of those things. I actually didn't have to talk me into it, I was just tired of cutting lawns. On Tuesday, March 13, I visited Ms. Annette Vandenberg and three Grade V classes who are currently studying the various levels of local government at the Langley Christian Middle School, and great to talk to 75 eager young students wanting to learn about government. The following day, on Wednesday, March 14, I visited the playground at High Point, where it was met by young resident Merlin and his sister, who are hoping to improve the play apparatus in this location. It's always great to meet with young people in our community and hear their thoughts and ideas. And his concern was that the apparatus wasn't being used enough, and what could we do? And I think one of the interim solutions that Mr. Buckner, one of our staff, came up with, was to bring some soccer goalposts into the big green space immediately, so we can have something there, and we'll certainly take another look at it. On Friday, March 16, I was at the Vancouver Giants Fan Appreciation Night, an awards presentation, where I presented the most sportsmanlike player to Davis Koch. Later that evening, I attended the VIP exclusive tasting event at the Italian, and I think a lot of hungry counselors were there at the same time. It's a new restaurant located in Walnut Grove. Counsel Sperrle and Counsel Richter also attended, and I think they can agree, it was good. And Counsel Sperrle, Counsel Richter, was anybody else there? You weren't there? Okay, yeah, it took me a couple days to get past the pasta hangover, and it was delicious. And by the way, the Jack, the Giant, that's not me. That's their mascot there. Sunday, March 18, was the annual BC Farm Museum Potluck Dinner, which was fantastic, as always. Counsel Long and his wife Karen attended the function as well, and great to see the volunteers who make that museum such a great place. The Phase II funding plan has been approved from TransLink for the mayor's council, and we had a presentation earlier this evening. Coincidentally, it's on the heels of that approval of a major funding initiative. The mayor's council has agreed on a proposed model to fund the region's $2.5 billion share, and $1.6 billion will be funded through increased fare revenue from higher ridership resulting in the service expansion, TransLink resources, and efficiencies. A delivery of the remaining funding share will be through average increases such as a five-to-fifteen cent increase in adult concession transit fares, a 15% per hour increase for parking, and on an average, home in Metro Vancouver is $5.50, $5.50 increase in property taxes. And one way to look at it is, if you have a $500,000 home, it's about $3, so a million-dollar home is about $6, or about 46 cents a month. $300 to $600 increase in development cost charges on new residential units, depending on the type of dwelling. So, this funding mechanism covers a variety of different sources. It's not hinged on one area, so the burden isn't on one area. It's not, some is on transit riders, some is on property owners, some is on new development. And new development puts more added pressure in our community. And we, obviously, from what we heard this morning, a lot more costs in providing the transportation needs. And we see the price of gas go up. I think people are looking at alternatives already on how to, how to get around this region. But it's about $4.5 to $5 billion are on the table from provincial and federal government sources, which is unprecedented in, in that we've had that much money put to transit in this area. And the mayor's just had to come up with something, to not let that money disappear, because a lot of other cities in Canada are vying for that same funding to improve their transit systems. So, big step forward. What it means to Langley, it means improved bus service in Willoughby area and Brookeswood area. The B-line buses from the first phase. But a big part of it is the design work will, will start and continue on the, on the Fraser Highway light rail. And that is something that a few years ago, we just didn't, light rail coming to Langley wasn't even heard of. And now, the design work will start, and that'll be part of Phase III. And soon, you'll start to see the light rail being, starting construction on the L-line. So, there's some significant improvements coming to south of Fraser. And working together with all of the mayors, it's, it's great to see that we're, we're moving forward. So, acting mayor Davis assisted in a few things. I got, councillor Davis, your mic is on, and I know you want to mention a few items.
Thank you very much. On the right, I attended the Langley Curling Club. It was the, the Langley's Youth Min Curling. They were in Scotland, they went to Scotland and won gold, and they played the final game against the Scottish. So, it was kind of Zachary Curtis, Jordan Tardy, Sterling Milton, and Tyler Tardy. And of course, the coach was Paul Tardy. So, it was a, it was kind of nice, the environment around the curling club. You can curl at any age, and I kind of like that. I went to the judging at the Trinity Western University three-minute thesis judging. And the people's choice was Jolene Harris. She was in the gray sweat, gray t-shirt. And number two was Cynthia Broad. And she was beside, she was on the left-hand side. And the winner went to Daniel Maderes. And the other, other, this, maybe you can help me. The president of.
Bob Coon.
Bob Coon, and Ken Keys, and myself. We, there were three judges. And it was, from there, they go, they'll go to Saskatchewan. And if they win in Saskatchewan, they'll go to, to Ontario, I believe. So, it's kind of interesting. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And councillor Qualley, did you have, you were at the social sustainability panel that was held on March. Just wanted to mention, let me get your mic on here. Here we go.
Thanks, yeah, that was held on Thursday night at the LEC. It was hosted as the kickoff event for the Sustainability Task Force and the sustainability work that our long-range planning and our social planner, Patrick Horda, is doing. They had just over 100 RSVPs to attend the evening, and I'm not sure how many actually turned up. It was a really good crowd. But there was a panel of speakers from different sectors, and it was moderated by Francis Beulah, who's in the photo on the right. And it was really well-done. The discussions that were had were really interesting and lots of different perspectives. And I think councillor Long, councillor Davis, councillor Sparrow, myself, councillor Arneson, and councillor Fox were all there. And, yeah, it was a really great start to what will be a really interesting body of work that we're undertaking with the Sustainability Task Force that's starting in the next few days.
Good, thank you. Okay, so, coming up, we have tomorrow the Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce March Dinner Meeting, and it's the Langley Leadership Panel. So, Mayor Schaefer and myself will be there, along with our two MLAs, Rich Coleman and Mary Pollack, to answer questions that are pertinent to our area. On March 30th is Easter weekend. Hope everyone has a great, great weekend with family and friends. And on April the 5th is a volunteer appreciation event, where the township of Langley celebrates their volunteers with a dinner and awards ceremony. So, with that, that's my mayor's report. Does any member of council have anything else to add? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on. On the agenda, just give me a minute to get back. So, move on to other businesses. Is there any other business? Councillor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. I actually have two notices of motion, mercifully. They're rather brief, so I'll just read them out. Whereas Section 26 of the Community Charter grants local governments the capacity to regulate, prohibit, or impose requirements in relation to trees. And whereas the Township of Langley Sustainability Charter mandates that council provide leadership with respect to environmental sustainability, and whereas the township is currently considering a township-wide tree protection bylaw,